Here we go.
Okay, can you hear me now? Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020. And we're again meeting by virtue of this new technology. So bear with us and we'll get everybody aboard that we need to. And I, and yeah, I want to welcome everyone. And we will start our meeting with, first on our agenda is Clark Schloss, our Jackson County engineer. Good morning.
First item on the agenda, this was the utility permit for having involved an emergency repair. It's not just a matter of being, you know, permanent signed and on file, so.
The one we okayed last week, correct?
Yes. I'm going to authorize the chair to sign.
I have a motion and a second to have the chair sign the underground utility permit for S. Over Brockley and Baldwin and 50th Avenue as, as approved last week. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is an entrance permit for Kevin Carpenter. This would be change in the field entrance of the 24th and entrance for the cabin. Of course, utilities, only cabin utilities. If approved, the address would be 4725. We haven't reported that in question. And it does need to speak distance requirements.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the entrance permit for Kevin Carpenter in Fairfield Township as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
Unless there are any other comments or questions, that's all we have for the week, probably.
Clark, did you get a chance to check out that bridge on 525th? We were gonna take a look at, see if there's any value or if we could move it or use it, reuse, or is we determined that it was not in the right of way, correct?
Correct. I guess it depends upon what you're going to use it for. If you're going to use it for any vehicular traffic, I would say no, it's not really, how should we say usable? If you start pulling those wood piling out, you're gonna, they're gonna be destroyed on that. You'd be basically having to rebuild, you know, the abutments for that if you wanted to use those beams. If you're using it as a walk bridge, you might be able to use it as that. You might have to repair some of the dead points you don't have or put new ones in. I, what did, conservation at your last meeting, did they show an interest or?
Um, possibly, yeah. Maybe down at, when you had back key property, there was kind of a big belly that, if they had a walk bridge or something there, they could use it.
Actually, that would be real close to this, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I do conservation directly, like, I don't know if he has.
So did we, did we have a chance to speak to the landowner there and discuss the situation that is not really in a right of way, that it's their, it's their?
Not yet. I wanted to hear what conservation. So if they were interested in that, I can direct secondary roads, you say, would be interested in, but conservation, you can give the director's, you know, phone number to call them at, if conservation wants to talk a deal.
Tom Devine said he might know somebody that would be able to move it and bring it up there, so. The wheels are turning. To me, the blanking looked good on it. I walked out and I went down under it and the beams looked good. They're 16 inch beams by six inch, I don't know, after five eighths. I don't know what, I mean, if it's strong enough for.
You'd have to give the measurements to, for the section modules and the steel manual for beams and, and then plug it into the calculations, you know, here's what it's rated. And of course, better get down there and start tapping with a hammer because once more you might find this spot.
But all in all, it looked pretty decent. I don't know about the approaches, if that's worth taking those out or not. The abutments, I mean, they look good. They're very, actually, I wish all of her bridges looked that little bit. But the decking boards, there was some spacing between them, so there's point and it looks like they're all dry.
But a conservation, you know, has some interest in that.
Yeah, we would at this time.
Here's the contact information, conservation.
Yeah, I would talk to the landowner and see how she feels about that one. I mean, we're gonna explain to her anyway about the right of way, so let's maybe give her an option to say.
And also I might give Tom Devine's informations. He's kind of showing some interest in this too.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Clark. Lisa, okay, and let me think, where are we at here? We have, is Gerald on the line, City of Macogota somewhere?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay, so we will skip to Gerald Smith, the city administrator for Macogota.
Yeah, thank you.
Apologize.
Go ahead.
I apologize, Gerald. A city manager for the city of Macogota.
Thank you. Yeah, I didn't have an opportunity to participate last week in your board supervisors meeting. I understood that you had some questions and some concerns as it relates with the bump outs. What I've done is I've invited Jim Harbaugh to, you know, at today's meeting with regards to the efforts that I think we've, what we've done to address the bump outs, to kind of bring about additional improvements and to promote for greater accessibility to handicap parking at that location. These were some of the concerns that were expressed to us. So we actually went back to our engineer and we incurred additional costs to try to find some solutions for that. And they did provide some solutions and I'll have Jim talk to you about what those solutions were to address that. But what we're looking for in the permanent easement is for the relocation of the existing signal at the intersection. I think it's the southeast corner of the intersection of Niagara, where we need about six to eight inches of space to move the, the current signal out of the sidewalk. So without me going into all the engineering details, I'll let Jim take the floor and basically outline what it is we were able to do to address the handicap issues and what we're looking to do with the, the signal, the signal light at that intersection. So Jim, or if you're there, I see your name, but.
Morning Gerald. Thanks, thanks for the pass off. I'm gonna try to attempt to share my screen here just to, to be able to see if I can show you that intersection corner that we're talking about. It looks like it's disabled on the, on the host side of things, so I can just talk through it too if that.
You guys know how to share or make someone a host to share a screen?
Just to share screens?
Lisa.
Yeah. Lisa can make him a co-host.
Yeah, just go to his name, right, click on, on his box or in the three dots. And then there should be an option to make him a co-host.
Right now.
All right, let me try it again. Yep, I can do that, so. Share a screen here and hopefully you'll be seeing a picture of the corner that we're talking about with the traffic signal base.
Yep, we can see it.
Okay, good to hear. So what we're looking at doing is taking this traffic signal and moving it slightly south to make sure that we have an accessible sidewalk in the front of the county building here at the intersection of Niagara and Platt Street. As you can see from the, the picture and the existing signal, it really impedes into the sidewalk area and really does not provide an accessible route. And that's one of the main reasons we're looking at the permanent easement is to, to move that traffic signal back a little bit farther. We also looked at, at some points about moving the sidewalk closer to the curb, but at the intersection here at the corner, then it starts to impede in some of the, the ADA accessibility ramps as well. So our best solution was to move that back. And that's really the, the main impetus behind the permanent easement. The other benefits that we're looking at doing is just putting a bench out on county property mid-block between Second and Niagara for users at, at the county courthouse or users of the sidewalk, and that would be installed and maintained by the city. And that's really the, the two main reasons we're looking at for permanent easement on the property.
Okay, Jim, I appreciate, this is Mike, by the way, and I, I don't think we have any concerns as far as that light being moved to the south of probably, I don't know what you're talking, a foot or 16 inches or something like that. I guess our concerns at one time that we had discussion about was, were the bump outs in the, I would call on Second Street, correct? I mean, that was our concerns. I mean, if they serve a purpose, that's fine. If they're just there for looks, then we not so much didn't like them, but.
Great question. And I, I guess I want to separate out, we, we're not looking at any permanent easements for any bump outs. That would be all on the city's right of way.
Understood.
But I want to talk through this at, and I apologize, this is mislabeled as Niagara. It should be Second Street on the bottom there. So we, we've talked to the city about their handicap parking stall that's on street there and wanted to, to take a better look at it and see if we can actually make it a little better for the county. This is a graphic depicting what that bump out might look like with restructuring of the sidewalk and the handicap stalls to make it in compliance with ADA and provide a van accessible stall on street where there's currently a non-van accessible stall and then a clear pathway. Bump outs serve a lot of uses. You know, one of the minor things would be the aesthetic side of things, but that's not really what we're looking at to, to implement it for. There's some safety aspects of the bump outs that are really a, a nice factor or feature for it. One is to provide the, the disabled user a less distance between one intersection side to the other to travel across driveways. It also helps in the design and reconstruction, especially in, in older neighborhoods like this where the intersection corners are pretty difficult to get ADA compliant handicap ramps in. Gives us a little bit of extra space for that. It provides a little bit of security and buffering between cars that are turning from Platt onto the side streets to protect some of those parked cars, but also the ADA handicapped accessible stalls from turning traffic. And it also is in line with what the city's done in their downtown area in regards to the, the aesthetic side of things.
If I'm looking at this, Jim, this is Mike again, if I'm looking at this correctly, between the handicap stall and the van, there's an access ramp there and there also, is that what I'm looking at?
That's correct. I don't know if you can see my mouse or not, but I'm kind of circling around. I can actually highlight here, this is a dedicated ramp for not only this stall, but for use on this one as well.
Okay, so if that bump out was, I'm sorry.
They can do it with the small sidewalk.
Like a no-slip type surface?
What kind of surface will that be, Jim? This is Lisa.
Yep, there'll be concrete sidewalk and as per ADA code, this part right here would be a detectable warning panel. Similar to what we would do, whoops, out in this area. Sorry, I can't draw with my mouse very well.
Okay, so if I'm looking at the corner of Platt and Second, so that, where the bump out is, that also is an ADA ramp. So do we, is that bump out required for the ADA ramp to be compliant? Or is that just?
This is an added feature. So if you look into the nuances of ADA, this ramp is required except when you're at the end of a run of, of on-street parking and then they can use this ramp here.
Yeah. So the handicap parking spot, is that reduced in length because of that ramp, uh, area?
It doesn't look very big.
It is not. What throws this off a little bit is the actual width of these are pretty wide. And to make a van accessible stall, we add, actually add in an extra four feet here. I apologize for all the scribbles here. I'm going to brace a little bit so we don't get confused.
You're fine. Does anyone have any concerns on the easement for the light, light?
No.
Moving.
I don't have a problem with that at all.
I only have one question, Jim. This is Lisa again. Holding, you can see that the courthouse has a set of steps. When we have a curb cut, they're lined up with the front of the steps. Will that, also, will we be, will we have that in the end result?
So you're, you're talking on the north side of the courthouse over here?
Northwest, yeah. Northwest corner where the double doors used to be, that actually used to be the main entrance for the portal.
So the question I have is, is that curb cut still going to be after the changes on Platt Street?
For loading.
That, that would be outside of the, the limits of the Platt Street construction.
No, 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 no.
So there won't be a ramp?
It's right on, this curb cut is right on the street.
Yeah.
On Platt?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll look at that and if it, if that's the requirement or desire of the county to have that, I don't see any issue why we shouldn't be able to put that in back in.
Well, they use them double doors for loading a lot of equipment and other things there. It's a nice double door for, and it's out of the way. We got room to back off the street to get out of the way of everything, everyone concerned, so. Actually, I don't know if we could see it. Actually, if you pulled that light pole back up, you know, that light, traffic light. I don't even see that.
Pull an aerial up real quick, just to make sure that we're looking at the same thing.
The very first picture you showed us, I think we could see it.
Would those double doors coming off Platt Street, the main entrance, would that entrance have to be approved via Iowa DOT? Jim?
No, it would, it should be fine. You're talking about right.
Yeah, so within the construction path.
Yep.
Okay.
We just wanted to make sure we can maintain it.
Yeah, no, in my mind, this would not be an accessible entrance as shown. If you want it as a handicap curb ramp, we would build it a little differently than what's shown here. If it is solely for loading equipment, we can build it very similar to what you have currently.
So tell me what the, yeah, so tell me what the difference would be as far as having it handicap accessible. Why, if we're gonna cut the curb out anyway, why wouldn't it be, what's the difference in the handicap accessible and just having a ramp?
I would say two things. We would need to have the detectable warning panels, kind of up front. We're, we're using a little different panel, but, style of panel, but.
For the total length of it?
For the length of it, yep. And then we also need to make sure that the slope meets ADA requirements, which it, it, it should, but it's this slope up and down here.
Personally, I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary, but that was just a question.
I just want the ramp. It doesn't need to be a handicap ramp. We just need the ramp.
We need to cut out of the curb, yeah, that's.
Yeah, if, if you make it handicap, there's nothing to stop someone park from parking there when you need it for, I guess, someone to stop to, to, to deliver.
Other than it says no parking.
I don't know if we can put no parking there if we put a ramp.
We just need the curb cut so we can.
It's just like no different to garage. It's for our personal use, you know?
For our maintenance people.
It makes sense. Okay, so we will make sure it's built as a, as a quasi-drive, if you will, not a handicap entrance, and it'll be similar in, in nature to what you have currently.
I mean, could we just put like a sign that says deliveries only or something like that?
Sure.
Yeah, that works.
If we can get a permit.
Well, we, we can talk about that.
Okay, yeah. All right, any other questions for Jim or Gerald or Don?
There, there's a line in this easement. The city of Macogota shall cease its use and surrender possession of the land subject to the easement upon expiration of the easement term. And then it has to put the, put it back the way it was, that it is now after 50 years. I think that needs to be eliminated or have a clause in there that would say, or extended. Because the way it is now, in 50 years, they're gonna have to tear it out and put it back the way it was today. That's the way I read it. I mean, it's just a little, something that needs to be cleared up, I think.
A little strange.
Yeah. Other than that, anything else, I mean.
I mean, yeah, I would think normally it would say it's automatically renewed or perpetual or something to that effect. You're certainly not going to tear it out in 50 years, we don't think. Neither of us, neither of us will know, but.
Right.
I might be retired by then, but I don't know, whatever you guys think there.
Yeah, we can make those adjustments.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions for these gentlemen? Well, I appreciate you coming on, Jim, and explaining it to us. We have action required here for the easement, basically. And, and if I'm correct, that's simply for the traffic light easement change, correct?
Just a, a addition to that, traffic light and the bench.
Yes, I apologize.
Do you guys want the bench?
I don't know if we'll get used on that north side, but I, I guess it's not a, it's not expense to us, but I mean.
Really just an continuation of what's going on in the downtown area.
Is to maintain continuity?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, we want to have continuity.
So any other discussion for Jim or Gerald or Don?
So moved. I would second with the changes for that contract or the ending date on it. I think it needs to be extendable.
So I have a motion and a second to approve the easement as presented and with the change for the extended, extending the date of expiration. All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Everybody.
Have a good day.
You too.
We are back at it and Lisa, you're willing to hold off? We, I think we're joined by Roger Stewart and Matt Speck for the Jackson County Emergency Loan Commission. We have discussion, possible action, emergency loan applications. Do we, how many applications do we have, Roger? Whoop, you're muted yet, Roger?
For that, Roger.
Look, he might.
Am I good?
You're good.
Okay.
That's a matter of personal, personal preference.
We have two applications. Matt, you may want to fill in here, but we have an application from Lock 12 Tracing Company LLC from Bellevue. And then we have an application from Spregville for Marley and Me, which is a restaurant or a diner. And they've been approved by the committee unanimously. We had a meeting last week and approval was unanimous.
And both of requests were for the $5,000?
Yes.
Thank you.
Let me clarify, Roger. This is Lisa. It was Lock 12, what?
Well, it's, the application I'm looking at, Alyssa, it says that the business name is Lock 12 Tracing Company LLC. Doing business as Lock 12 Music. And the, the people, the name of the people, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, Karen Lances?
That's correct. That, that's correct, yeah.
And we, we relied on John Hoss for a little background on this business. And so it's nice to have John and Patty and Kathy on board. That's Kathy Till and Patty Upman.
Well, we certainly appreciate the, that the committee and the application people volunteered their services to do that and they looked into it for us. And we appreciate you guys' work on that also.
I would make a motion to approve the loans.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the emergency loan applications as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried. We thank you guys. This was our purpose to try to help someone and in the future, we'll have to see how we move forward.
I guess I, I was a little surprised. Do you think there was some reasons other people didn't apply?
Matt?
Um, I, I don't know if the timing was too short or if it was maybe bad timing with, with businesses starting to open up. You know, were, were they more focused on getting their business back open? But I guess I really don't have a, a good answer.
Well, I, I myself thought, well, you know, maybe we should have extended the time, the timeframe because we didn't give them a whole lot of time to apply. And I guess I was surprised that there was only two that actually filled out applications.
I think maybe some of it had to do, Matt, this is Mike, and maybe some of it had to do with the reference of the, you know, they exhausted all their other options, you know? So there might have been other options available to them that they pursued. I don't know that, but I know different rounds of funding from, from the government be if, if it was more in their parameters. I don't know that, I guess.
Well, I think the question is, you know, do you choose to open it up again? Or we just call the effort complete? That's the question, I think.
I think I would open it up again.
I, I'd have a, I'd lean that way.
Do you want to set a time period if that's, that's the choice to open it up for a period of time?
Well, I'll tell you what, let's, I, I don't know, I guess. And I know Wendy was, I don't know if Wendy's on today, but I know she had said she had eight people that had inquired before we decided to do it. I see Nick is on. If, if, I, my own opinion is if we get more inquiries from people, I think we can certainly open it back up or take it under consideration at that time. I mean, I think people had the chance to, their opportunity to move forward with it if, if they wanted to, but I don't know.
This is, this is Nick Oakenberry. I can, I can say I spoke to two other potential applicants who it looks like didn't, didn't apply. So I'll follow back up and see maybe what that reason was. The other, you know, we talked a little bit about the short time period. Because of the, the sort of change in the newspaper to a weekly, they actually only had a full, maybe a little over a full week of notice via the newspaper before applications were due. So, you know, that may have been the reason why the two that I spoke to didn't, didn't get them in, in time or, but I'll follow up and, and find out. And I, I haven't talked to, I haven't talked to Wendy in particular, but I can reach out to her and see if she knows why some of the people she had thought might apply didn't.
Well, why don't you reach out to them, Nick, if you would, to Wendy and to your people who may have had some interest and see if we need to revisit it going forward?
Then, then I assume that we come back to you and say, would, could we open it up? And so it's a two-step process.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's a process where we're gonna do it legally in the right way. You know, we have it, we have it in our, we changed the, basically, the parameters of. basically, the parameters of the revolving loan fund already. So we got the wording in there now. Um, I think it's just a matter of if we decide to revisit it and do it again.
We'll decide on whether anybody's interested.
Right. Is that fair enough? Roger, Nick?
I think that's fair.
Sounds good.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work, too, guys. I know it, it pays well.
Yeah. And Matt, you'll go ahead and, and process the loans, I assume, at this point, right?
Yes, we'll keep it moving forward on our side.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, I, I didn't see Becky walk in the halls yet. Lisa, can we get into your?
I think so.
So moved, second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes of the June sixteenth, twenty twenty board proceedings as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of four hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Um. I personally am gonna move the table action on that. I think we have several questions concerning some of the, uh, claims that are in there, and I think we need to have some answers yet today before we approve some of the claims.
Is, is there personnel close enough here? I have a couple of questions, I think Shelley can ask part of my questions, and is Ed on the line?
Ed, I called and talked to Ed last night. He was supposed to call in this morning at nine fifteen. So we may just call him to get some of those questions answered. I know that there are other claims in here that.
Well, one of the, one of the things that concerns me is I thought most of the departments had a county credit card. And I don't like writing a check for over two thousand dollars to somebody on their individual private credit card. I don't think they should use it. There was two departments that I know for sure that used a personal credit card for purchases for the county. And I don't like that.
We, we need to establish a policy.
We needed to revisit our policy, basically, because if that's what the policy says, then we need to revisit the, uh,
And I guess I have some questions on what the purchases were and why they were made.
Um, I know the one purchase that you asked for the, for the, that was not mentioned, so.
And I would have a.
If you wanna table that, that's fine. So, well, we can get some personnel or get some phone calls made or something. This is the last claims period of the year, so it's the only way that we could pay additional claims next week is if it were a handwritten warrant situation.
So I have a question for, I, I believe was answered to me, but I'd like to have it addressed in public, uh, if Shelley is available?
We can, um, why don't I have one more? Thing that I need, one more item on my agenda, and in the meantime, if you don't mind, I'll show it over. So, um, my last item that I have right now. What I need right now is a motion is needed to approve and authorize the chair's signature to sign resolution seven hundred and forty-six dash zero six dash twenty-three dash twenty-twenty, placing a tax assessment of one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars on property located at ninety-eight sixty-three Cave Road for the nuisance abatement performed on June seventeenth, twenty nineteen. This was approved on June twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, but was rescinded. So this is because of our discussion last week. We went back to see, we did pay one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. It did not get put on the taxes last year. Um, so we need to put this resolution on, so by July first, so it can go on this year's tax. So.
Is that the correct number though? Because we got that bill that was, I don't know if it was this amount, but it was a large amount, and it was for that one time, and it was just a quick mow.
I know that.
Back and forth. I, I know we didn't pay that full amount. We paid this lesser amount.
We paid the twelve seventy-five.
We paid it?
I think that was the lesser amount, to be honest.
That was, otherwise it was like over five thousand, something like that. So he would mow it several times during the summer.
Yeah, that was.
Which we couldn't do. We could only do it one, one time, one payment at a time.
So that's why we're trying to recoup our money.
I would move that we approve resolution number seven four six dash oh six dash two three dash twenty-two.
So how do we set it so we do not hire this company again?
Talk to Ben.
Ben is the one that contacted, contacts whoever's going.
And it needs it desperately. I was by there this week.
The lawn's all right. It's just weeds in front of the house. The lawn isn't very long.
Like that?
Yeah.
But in order for us to have us do it and then charge them, Ben has to give them notice each time.
I know that. So. But when it gets like this, that's when it gets to be twelve hundred and seventy-five dollars for one mowing. And that's just the front.
Right, that's right.
Thanks, I don't talk to go all the way. I second it. I have a motion and a second to approve and authorize the chair to sign resolution seven four six dash zero six dash two three dash twenty-twenty, placing a tax assessment of twelve hundred and seventy-five dollars on a property located at ninety-eight sixty-three Cave Road for nuisance abatement performed on June seventeenth of twenty nineteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
So just so you know, Shelley, they have tabled any action on approving the claims. They do have some questions.
Have a couple of questions. So under the county sanitarium, there's approximately fifty-nine thousand dollars that was paid out. I don't have the claim in front of me. Could you explain that that basically is a pass through from the grant? That was awarded?
The amount is so that we can, um, we have to spend it for the grant in order to get reimbursed by the, by the SAMSA, um, federal government, uh, for this drug grant. Um, because the reason it's so large this time is we are getting, we, we have to make a claim for Kimberly's, the ten percent of Kimberly's salary for the current year. And then, well, since October first through June thirtieth. And then because SAMSA is turning over authority of the drug grant to the CBC, the Center for Disease Control, um, we have to have all of our expenses for July first through, through September twenty-ninth, paid for by June thirtieth and submitted and get reimbursed by that, by them, by June thirtieth. So we had to submit a claim for next year, to us, next year's expenses, and get paid for them in, by June thirtieth. So that's why that amount is so large.
Well, you know, it was just a large amount. I know it's the end of the fiscal year and that we need to clear things up that need to be cleared out, but it drew a red flag to me to say that's not normal. So then, that's why I asked you for an explanation, and for me to relay that explanation is difficult. So you know exactly what you're talking about. Appreciate you explaining that to us. Anybody have any questions for Shelley? Or?
I do, but I think I need to talk to, we need to talk to the individuals themselves rather than Shelley. And Shelley can say what it was, but that doesn't give us the rationale why the purchases were made.
And, and I did that last night, so that's up to you, yeah, up to you guys, what you'd like to do. Okay, well, we certainly wish everybody well there, so anyway. I appreciate that, Shelley. Anybody have any other comments or questions for Shelley?
I guess my suggestion would be that natural programs plan to, you know, bring in those individuals that you would like to ask questions for.
And would somebody have the possibility or capability of trying to contact that individual? And while the rest of our meeting is going on?
Who are we calling? The gentleman that I talked to last night, you're saying?
I, I'm talking, I, I'm talking personally Veterans Affairs. There's somebody from the Veterans Affairs Commission that would be available. I would certainly like to talk to them or, or to Debbie.
And I talked to Ed last night. He said we'd call in at nine fifteen.
That was a half hour ago, so.
Right, so either we need to call him and put him on speakerphone to get your questions answered.
And I wanna talk to, um, GIS.
Yeah, that was an invited item.
And we could see if Heather is available? By the end of the meeting or before the end of the meeting?
Yeah, I mean, that's, so we can resolve any of those issues that you have, yeah.
All right, so do we need to take action on the table? Tabling of that or just table it till the end of the meeting?
Ask for motion, nobody has.
My move that we take all action on the claims until the end as the last order of business for this meeting today.
Second. A motion and a second to table the approval of the claims as presented until we can ask some further questions of departments required. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Um, next on our agenda is Becky. Are you available? Awesome. Good morning, Becky. We're joined by Becky Taven, our Human Resource Administrator.
Okay, we have a couple of things we've been working on that are ready to be settled up. The first one of those being the agreement with Buchanan County for shooting an assistant to the county engineer. Buchanan County agreed to the agreement yesterday. We have been working with them to establish a rule that will agree upon the terms. We now have one document that's ready to be approved if you are okay with the final document that you presented with. Um, if all is well with twenty-eighty agreement, um, I would just ask for a motion to approve this agreement sharing the assistance to the county engineer as presented and authorized. Sign will be original upon receipt from Jackson County. Originals do have to be recorded, so they have sent the two originals to us. We'll sign them both and we'll return one original. One will be recorded in the respective counties.
Hang on, Becky, I'm, I'm a little bit, I'm gonna take a short recess at this time.
Well, are you in recess?
I am in recess. Okay, excuse me. I am going to reconvene our meeting at this time. And we are joined with one of the Veterans Affairs Administration's commissioners, and Becky's gonna take a moment, and, and she's gonna, she agreed to pause her explanation. I'd like to have everybody hear it, so, um, it's, we were interrupted by a phone call, and we'd like to take that phone call if he's available. Do I just need to hit the speaker button? Ed?
Yes.
Good morning, and this is Mike, and, uh, we have, I guess, to start the meeting, we didn't introduce everyone, but we're all here, Larry and Jack and Lisa and Luanne, and actually Becky, our Human Resource person is here also. So I guess we had a claims this month, and I had a couple of questions on the Veterans Affairs, and maybe you could clear up a little bit for me. It was, I don't know what the explanation was. It was for, uh, what was the claims for?
There was a claim for one?
Promotion. I, I would think that was the right word, promotion? Promotional items, uh, and from A and B. And, uh, we were just kinda wondering what that was for. It was a fairly substantial amount. Uh, two hundred t-shirts, I believe, also were involved.
Okay, uh, first of all, it's, it's, it comes out of the budget for the state's money, the state's allocation towards Veterans Affairs. And due to the, uh, coronavirus, COVID-nineteen, we, uh, as a, as a commission, decided not to have the annual meeting or the supper for promoting, uh, promoting the Veterans Affairs Office in September, like we have during the last couple of years. So not having that expense, we decided to move the money to other expenses, not other expenses, other promotional items to help veterans become aware of what is available.
Okay.
And a t-shirt would do that?
Um.
If people wear the t-shirt outside of their, uh, home or domicile, uh, I would say that it would be a form of advertising. Yeah, it's the same as anything else that you would advertise on your, on your pencils and your pen.
Okay. So basically, um, we're just promoting the Veterans Affairs Office or our, our commission?
Veterans Affairs Office, uh, as a contact.
Sure.
For the, to help the veterans.
For, for our veterans, you bet.
For whatever, for whatever need they may have.
Sure. Yeah, we, we surely want them to use that facility. And as I understand it, we have, um, we have a good turnout over there, so, um, I appreciate what they're doing.
But here again, it's, it's, uh, it comes out of the state's allocation money.
Okay.
It has to be strictly used for promotional items. It, it can't be used for, uh, any other reason for that, other than that. It's to promote the office and so forth.
Appreciate that. We can all appreciate that. We just had a question. Uh, it wasn't normal that we see in our budget, so we, we certainly would like to question it, and then we, we appreciate your explanation. Does anyone else have any questions for Ed?
I guess I do. And
Jack, Ed?
Look, looking at the, the, the whole budget package, it taught, there's a, a function, um, general services to veterans. And we had eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars budgeted for that one line item. Used to date is thirty-one dollars. So there's eight hun- eight thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars. And I guess I'm, I'm just surprised that for the veterans that you're serving, and we know that you're serving veterans. I can't figure out why there would be only thirty-one dollars used out of that line item.
That line item, could you give, put that title on there again, Jack?
General services to veterans. It's food or provisions, rent payments, utility payments, funeral services, uh, grave, uh, maintenance, grave markers, transportation. Out of all those things that's been budgeted, and the total budget for that, that area is ten thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars.
Um.
And, I mean, thirty-one dollars, point three-five percent of the budget that was used in that area. And I just can't believe that there aren't veterans out there that you're providing other, other services to.
To the best of my knowledge, Jack, if, if my memory serves me right, we talked about that. And, uh, uh, you'd have to check with Debbie Schrader to be, to find out for sure, but uh, where I can recall is that there has not been any claims from veterans for the, in the county. Uh, you know, for rental assistance or for, uh, uh, utility bills or something of that nature. Which we thought was very unusual, but, because we did discuss it, but, um, we, we can't pay if we don't get a claim or a request for claim.
Is that a question you asked?
Well, I can speak a little bit to that. That service area, Jack, is the same as general assistance for non-veterans. That piece of their budget, as well as general assistance, we are the funder of last resort. I know from my specific office, and I would have to assume it's the same for Veterans Affairs, is being a funder of last resort by law, we spend more time trying to help them get other funding. That comes first through state and federal programs. They work harder to make sure they're covered by the state allocation and the federal funding available to veterans before we pay at the county level. So it's quite possible that they helped multiple veterans get their rent paid or their food bills or those kind of things. And I, the general public, it was just through other sources. I could only assume, but I don't, you know, know that that's the whole picture of that in the office.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Anyone else have any questions? Well, we sure appreciate you coming on, Ed, and taking a few minutes out of your day here to explain that to us. Of course, it, it just opened our eye a little bit, and we just had a couple of questions. We appreciate it and everything you're doing.
Well, I, uh, your inquiry too, because, uh, I would, uh, if I see something unusual, I raise my eyebrow. Well, I, your inquiry too, because I would, if I see something unusual, I raise my eyebrows also.
Well, everybody's is required to be accountable, so that's what we're trying to do here.
You betcha.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye.
Have a good day.
Bye-bye.
Alright, so we are again, and if we can start this all over, if it's okay with you. Alright, so we're joined by Becky Chapman, the Human Resources Administrator. And take that phone off the hook.
Okay, the first thing you have in front of you in your package is the twenty eighty agreement, twenty eighty agreement for sharing assistance to the county engineer services between Jackson County and Buchanan County. We have been working with Buchanan County to finalize a document and a set of agreements that we both feel will mutually work for both counties. We are now to the point where Buchanan County has approved the twenty eighty effective at the board meeting yesterday. Now it's our turn. Nothing has changed in the agreement since we have last seen a draft of this. This is the final copy. If everything looks okay with the board, we will just look for a motion to approve the twenty eighty agreement with Buchanan County for the sharing of the assistance to the engineers presented and authorized signing of the original upon receipt from Buchanan County. Buchanan County will send us two originals as required us both to file them with our board's office. So when we receive those in the next day or two, they can then be signed.
And the starting date is July?
July first.
First.
The ten, the starting date of the agreement is July first.
Okay.
So, second. Have a motion and a second to approve the twenty eighty agreement with Buchanan County for sharing an assistant to the county engineers presented and authorized and the signature of the original upon receipt from Buchanan County. Any further comments, discussion? I'd just like to say that we've been working on this very diligently and we appreciate the action on Buchanan County's part. And we look to be great neighbors and good partners in this agreement and, and hope it works out well. All those in favor say aye. Opposed nay. Motion carried.
The next item you have is the joint agreement to Clinton County and Jackson County for sharing, for sharing interim engineer services and coverage. This will be effective July first, twenty twenty as well. We again have been working on Clinton County to establish interim coverage as we begin the replacement of our county engineer. This agreement has been signed by their board effective yesterday. You do have a copy of their signature. They as well have sent two original copies for us to sign and file. If everything looks okay with the agreement, the motion as well would be to approve the joint agreement between Clinton and Jackson Counties for interim engineer services as presented and authorize signing of the original upon receipt from Clinton County.
So move. I second. Have a motion and a second to approve the joint agreement between Clinton and Jackson Counties for interim engineer services as presented and authorized and signature of the original upon receipt from Clinton County. Any further discussion? Again, I would want to like to say that we appreciate the work that was done by the Clinton County Supervisors and their interaction with them. And we appreciate their concerns and they're willing to help us in this situation and moving forward. And we are adjoining counties and we are good neighbors. We've always had a good working relationship. I appreciate that very much. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
And the next item you have in front of you is a resolution. This resolution is required by the DOT to be filed with their office. And it is to authorize Clinton County engineer to accept, to accept all farm-to-market and federal or state aid construction projects on behalf of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors. This draft came from Houston at the DOT. As long as the county attorney has agreed as well, as long as you're on board with appointing a team of Clinton County engineers, the interim Jackson County engineer to accept the farm-to-market and state and federal on behalf of the board supervisors, we would need a motion to approve Resolution seven four seven zero six two three twenty twenty, authorizing Clinton County engineer to accept all farm-to-market and federal or state aid construction projects on behalf of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors.
So move. Second, have a motion and a second to approve Resolution seven four seven dash zero six dash two three dash twenty twenty as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
Next item you have in your pocket is on discussion and possible action on the public notice and advertising to and seeking in the county engineer. There are some unresolved items on this, including salary. I don't know if you wish to discuss this today and proceed with getting this out in the papers and to media, or if you want to take more time to evolve into what you would like it to contain.
I, I personally have looked it over for three months or two months. I, I guess, you know, as far as the, the salary range, we, we've looked at every engineer, what their salary was in the state of Iowa. We've looked at our neighbors and counties with the, about the same population in that range. And as, I don't know if you mentioned it, the state average is one oh eight. We have in our proposed maybe application that the salary range was between ninety-five to one hundred and fifteen. I don't know what everybody's thoughts are on that. If that's a, it's a.
Average is one hundred and eight. That's in between. I think it's a good starting point.
It's dead in between, yeah. And as far as counties of our size, you look at, at a couple of them like Fayette and, and what not close to us. Of course, there's other factors in some of these that we have to consider. So I guess I'd like to get it out there, you know, I mean.
It's imperative to get it out.
The salary range is gonna depend on qualifications and experience and, and whatever it may be is, is as so seen on this document of the state of Iowa, basically, so.
This is a wide enough range that it gives you room to make decisions on this then.
As far as, and, and are we discussing the job description also, or is this just the?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I know we don't have it in there. I know several other, do, do we want to put design and inspection in our engineer job description? Or is that a perk per say, per salary, or is that?
That's another topic of discussion. I did actually ask for Clinton County's engineer job description. I received that. It is not in there as well.
Okay.
Now, I actually planned on, if we, if we're ready to advertise for the position, we can go with that and we can discuss the job description.
Okay. That's what, that's what my question was, for this question.
So if you're okay with going ahead and getting the public notice out there and starting the advertising for the position, the application deadline to apply may, I feel like it probably needs to be extended down July twenty fourth, since I've done some research on when it's gonna be the whole of newspapers. We may want to extend that to the end of June thirtieth. Or July thirtieth, sorry. Just as a, as a first go around.
No, I would, I would have a tendency to agree with that and, and I don't know how many resources we have, well, how far we can go. But I've talked in colleges, is there a pool that we get into or something that we advertise or into the?
I don't.
Social media aspect of it?
I don't necessarily know about colleges if you're, if that's.
If you're four years experienced.
Yeah.
Well.
So that's another question that I have is the experience that you're gonna require one to get to the job description.
Right.
So let's move to the public notice. If you're okay with the public notices presented with that salary range, with the application deadline to apply, the first date of Thursday, July thirtieth at four P M. I will move that date from the twenty fourth to the thirtieth.
Do you need action on that?
I'm getting a motion to approve the public notice seeking that.
I would say July thirty first.
July thirty first.
That's a Friday.
Go to a Friday.
Second. I have a motion and a second to, to approve advertising, public, the public notice for the position of county engineer with the changes that were noted. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
Now, as far as advertising, here are the contacts I made and the prices associated with getting it out to each of those places. So we need to determine, the easy part is at the bottom. The other web-based are the ones that were published in the hiring guide by the DOT. Most of them are free with the exception of the National Society of Professional Engineers. If we want to pay to get on that website, it's four hundred and ninety-five days for a thirty-day online only, or six hundred and seventy-five for sixty-day online only. The rest of them can be placed for free. The ISAC County Magazine cannot make it until August because July has already gone to print. They will get it on our website. If we want to put it in August, we would need to delay the deadline for applications. The other ones, you can see the Quad City Times with the Dispatch Argus runs one Sunday, one Thursday, and one Wednesday, plus online for thirty days for a thousand ninety-six dollars. The Des Moines Register is twenty-one hundred dollars for an eight-day run plus online. And the Telegraph Herald has multiple options. The most viable of those being the nine hundred dollar ad, just due to the size of the print ad. And nine by nine point seven five is probably the most realistic for the information we're gonna want to get out there. All of the Indeed, Google Jobs, ZipRecruiter, Blast Door, those are all national. So they're included in both of the Quad City Times and the Des Moines Register. The way those work is if you go to Indeed, generally you're searching on an area that you want to work. So you can have hundreds of thousands of hits on those online platforms alone. Just depends on who's searching for our area.
So would you recommend all of these then?
You know, between Stacy, Mike, and I, we feel like if you want the exposure to be out there, you almost have to at least run one of these. It's quite costly.
We're, we're looking at either the Des Moines Register or the Quad City Times.
And the Quad City Times with the Dispatch Argus hits the main Quad City area as well as the thirty-six thousand residents over on the Illinois side.
Well, we certainly need exposure. That's, well, I think, we don't.
So they're both doing the zip recruiter though.
And those are included, so that would give you extra depending.
So we're doubling up. It's just a different area.
I talked to one of the other most recent counties that advertised about this. They said they did the print and the digital patch, package from the Des Moines Register. Did not get a single referral from it. They did have an ad rep from the Des Moines Register constantly in contact with them after that. That was the only thing that came out of that. So we could start with the Quad City Times. If you wanted to hit the D of Waterloo up into the Wisconsin area, we could add the Telegraph Herald. And then we could get it on as many of the free association websites. The Engineer Services Bureau is free.
Well, I think they're gonna be our main lines. Do they indicate to you where they would have gotten any information from or leads from?
Who's that?
The other county that you spoke with.
They basically did their own outreach and we heard the same as well from, I believe it was Clinton County.
Yeah, I know. They were looking for an assistant.
I really think the bottom, the bottom ones with the civil engineers and all that, county engineers, their websites are where those people would be looking for a job.
Right.
I guess like, I understand the Quad City Times if you're looking for the area.
Well, and again, we want to hit, you know, I mean, so we get hit engineer services of some kind also, you know, it's like, and if you're looking for somebody to hire, you look maybe at other engineers to say, yeah, are you interested?
I shoot it out to my H R group.
Sure.
As well, so all the other counties that won't see it in the ISAC magazine will be aware of it as well.
And as far as social media or professional social media, or is there something that's available?
That would be the other web-based ones.
Yeah.
And if we did the, if we just did, if we didn't do the Des Moines Register for now, if we do the Quad City Times, that does include all of those national web-based platforms.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
Well, I would say we do the Quad City Times and I think we should do the Telegraph Herald.
And the National Society of Professional Engineers.
Yeah, yeah. And I would say the thirty day.
Yeah. Interest.
Yeah.
Best word.
Okay, that's where I will put it.
Do you need motion on that?
I don't. I'll just handle the advertising. The job is, so back to the job description. The draft that you have in front of you, I almost, I want to table the job description, but I still want to have this discussion just leading to if you can follow up with back to the line of inspection.
Yes.
I did go ahead and get it. We have a copy of Buchanan County's assistant. I don't recall the engineer that's got designing inspection in there or not. I did get Clinton County says we're gonna start to work with them on an interim basis. And it does not have design in there as well. I almost felt like maybe we should have a new, when we have Todd come up, maybe that's something we should go through if it's viable for our department to make that a mandatory requirement going forward, or if it's something that we can.
I don't know if it's, yeah, I, I don't know if that should be mandatory. I sure would, I sure would appreciate his input of what his experience.
And inspection is in here. I just don't know about the actual design itself.
Sure, sure.
I think it would really be nice to have more than one person capable of doing that. Something goes on.
But, but we can't, we can't make that a requirement, I don't think.
And if you did want to.
It certainly is hurt for them. Per salary range or whatever it may be, if that's, that's the situation. Also, I guess I, you know, the job description part of it, I also just questioned, was the education and experience part? And we're saying four years' experience and having engineering work with a minimum two years in supervising role. Is, is that a requirement or is that preferred or negotiable?
Those are minimal qualifications based on what you want them to have. Some counties have seven years required experience. Clinton County has six years required experience. They're all across the board. If you don't want them to have any experience, you can hire the person right out of college. That's up to your discretion.
And I guess it's one of them situations where we're in, we're, we're in a little bit uncharted waters to see how much our shared engine, assistant engineer is capable of and what his timeframe might be and what he can all assist us with.
How many years' experience does Alex have?
Say four, four or five, I'm not sure. Five, do we know? Did I, I don't remember off the top of my head.
That's where I'm going with that. If he has that much experience already, we could take on somebody freshly out of school. And he would pick up.
Again, that depends on how much time he's gonna have to, for other, I mean, when we, when we agreed to this, it was with Buchanan, it was for certain, and it said other engineer services, but it's gonna depend on what time, well, how much time he has.
Well, we would have that expertise in-house.
Right.
To make a decision on different projects. I think that's what we're looking for. So I would feel comfortable with somebody, I mean, the right person out of college. It just would give us a whole bigger playing field to, to pick and choose from.
So, um, yeah.
And they, some are coming out with the, the can design and, and do inspections right out of.
Well, again, with the technology that's out there, again, it's, it's much, we need to move forward. And so this doesn't really say since he became an engineer, but he's been working for Buchanan County as a graduate engineer since two thousand thirteen, so that's seven years. Yeah, I, I'm okay with the four years.
Well, I'm okay with the four years.
So we, do we want to put just preferred in front of that, or, or is that preferred four years of experience?
I think we should have that as preferred.
Yeah.
Okay, I agree with that, but if somebody shows up that looks really good right out of school, I think.
Yeah, well, we'll see what we.
Get that out too.
Okay, do you need action on that?
If you're okay with the job description as presented with the addition of the word in front of that, we can certainly approve it today. Would you want me to make the change?
I would make a motion to approve with that change.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the job description with the change noted. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
That's all I have.
That's it?
That's it. I did speak with Todd down in Clinton County. He is available to come up on July seventh. So according to your plan, when she gets the agenda put together, as far as how the board's gonna be here on July seventh, and with the engineer staff to have them come up after the board meeting.
And we want to meet with him and the staff.
Yeah, we certainly want to have a dialogue and some, and some meetings with everyone concerned. Everybody's comfortable and sooner than later, so.
Would you like him to come in front of the board meeting that day or just after?
You know, I would feel comfortable with Todd coming and introducing himself just to the general public if he's okay with that. I think he would be.
I think so.
Uh, we'd like to, I, I like to see people's faces.
We'll just try to make him last on the agenda.
Get your reaction and.
We'll try to make him last on the agenda then before we go through.
That'd be great.
And I will just have him stay at two.
Yeah. And also, what about Alex? As far as his, has our engineer department have any contact with Alex as far as him coming down, getting acquainted? Start, actually, he needs to start, we need to move forward.
With him and it's my understanding he is not available for us to use until I.
Okay.
Due to prior commitments on that construction project, I couldn't bring that back.
Just so, I know we've started with the process for the bridge that's closed, so we want to keep that one on the fast track. And I've talked to him previously in conversations and we're comfortable with where we're at, so.
Maybe we can get a Zoom meeting with Alex where we can get on the same page just to know we're out with our projects and see what kind of timeline we're looking at first.
That would be great.
That, the other one would be the South Main Street Bridge.
Well, and that's, and that certainly is on our agenda, yeah. And we've got, what, three years for that, so.
Could you hand me my sheet plan?
I said it right here, I'm sorry, right here.
Just trying to give you a reservation and I had a blank paper to sign.
Which, well, that's why I was looking here while you were talking. So she did not, she has this resolution, is it seven-four-seven?
She was going to put that on reservation paper.
Right.
I'll have her do that and I'll read it.
Yes, yes. She doesn't know if she was supposed to put it on reservation paper or not, so.
I have it, okay, yes, I'm going to be, I'll bring it back over and get it to you as soon as you guys can sign. Yep, sounds good, okay.
Thank you. As, as a board, as a whole board and a whole, we'd also like to thank you for all your hard work in this. You've done a lot of research, you, you all have been working very diligently on this to make something work out for us for the better, and we appreciate all the work you've done. Okay, we're right on schedule, right, Ryan? Good morning.
Hello, how are you folks?
We're good. Good morning, Ryan, we are joined by Ryan Conley, our Jackson County EMS coordinator, for just a few updates. We haven't seen you for a while, so.
Been a minute.
Yeah.
There's something, there was something going on, I'm not sure.
Yeah, 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 we all been there.
Bug going around or something.
There's a bug going around.
So for the update portion, every Thursday at the hospital, we have AJ classes. We rotate advanced cardiac life support and pediatric advanced life support. So next month is ACLS. In July, this month was pediatric advanced life support. I'm there for the first three Thursdays doing AJ. On the third Thursday, we do two CPR classes. We try and break them up between experienced providers and inexperienced providers. It just allows you to teach to the actual students as opposed to just a cookie cutter version. The fourth Thursday is dedicated to general education such as EKG rhythm interpretation for those who need it. State inspectors should be here in late August, early September. They haven't given me a definitive date, which means they go through every single document you have in your ambulance service, such as protocols, chart audits, education records, and mandatory skill verifications. We had one for Springbrook as they transitioned to paramedic service. And we send all the documents there. The inspector was there for approximately twenty minutes and saw everything he needed to see. Gave us the rubber stamp and was confident away. I'm working on, it's CAPCE is what it's colloquially known as, but it's the Commission on Accreditation for Pre-Hospital Continuing Education. This used to be kind of a unicorn for pre-hospital education because prior to this body, you had to be face-to-face with first responders, EMTs, paramedics, or account as your formal education. And there is a set number of hours each first responder, EMT, or paramedic need to recertify. This allows you to do it online, but it still has to be live. Meaning I still have to be there speaking, but we can do a live feed. Right, like your Zoom meetings now. So it allows people to stay in their home facility. If I'm in Bellevue, people from Springbrook can log in, or people from Preston can log in. They've really relaxed the guidelines now with the whole COVID thing. So I'm going to try and take advantage of it now, especially if we increase our territory. It would kind of allow you to kill two birds with one stone, as it were. We have PHDLS and AMLS, which is pre-hospital trauma life support. It's a bit like our advanced cardiac life support, CPR, pediatric advanced life support, but this is specific to trauma. We had this all set up to go and then COVID happened. So we have all of the books, manuals, PowerPoints that we need. We just need to be able to meet in large groups so we can fulfill the education. Working on agreement right now with a pharmacy to exchange drugs for the community paramedic service. Right now, they're physician-owned drugs, so the state of Iowa makes, the ambulance can't own drugs. We're not qualified to own drugs. We can have drugs, but we can't own them. So they're either physician-owned or pharmacy-owned. Dr. Biden currently owns our drugs, but what that means is if we use a drug on a cardiac arrest, then we have to order boundary, so it's not instantaneous. And if they're on backward, you just don't have it. So we're currently working with a hospital-based pharmacy to work out a deal where we can not only obtain drugs from them, but then also exchange them with their outdates because they all have expiration dates. This will drastically reduce the cost of the service and it's a little more instantaneous. Quite literally, the next business day, we go down to the pharmacy, say, you know, here's the drug we use, and we just exchange it. So it will save that service money and also allow them to operate. The turnaround will be much quicker for the drugs. Coordinating with local residents for AJ classes such as CPR, ACLS, advanced cardiac life support, and pediatric advanced life support. They're not able to go to the hospital to get the classes when I'm holding them on every Thursday. So I've been working with local AJ providers, instructors, to coordinate with citizens to obtain their certification through these various instructors, because right now it's really, really hard to find classes, obviously, because nobody's moving. And if they are meeting, they're trying to make it specific to their employees because without certifications, they can't work. We have skills verifications, that's my last skills verification for renewal, it'll be in Andrew tonight at seven. And we'll be providing two formal education hours tonight. We submitted the region five-day grant and we're waiting paperwork that we have to sign for the intent to participate for the upcoming fiscal year. We build. Sorry. Built four thousand eleven dollars and fifty-three cents. The max for our, this grant year, I believe, was thirty-four hundred. So we overbuild because with COVID, a lot of people weren't doing the training. So the worst they can tell you is no one gave you the amount, the maximum, but if there's any additional funds after the close of the grant, they'll distribute those. So maybe we'll get an extra six hundred bucks.
Certainly try. You can always ask, yeah. Don't know, let's ask.
And barring a recurrence or another outbreak of COVID where they start to implement isolation precautions, we'll be holding another EMT class sometime in November or whenever they're out of the field. It doesn't do us a whole lot of good to hold a class while people are still farming because the majority of people that are going to attend the class, they would be forced to miss the classes because they'd be in the field. So as soon as we have a better grasp on when they're going to be out of the fields, we'll set up a farm day, but it should be late November, early December.
We should, certainly want to accommodate that and we have lots of things growing, they can be out early this year and work out for them.
That's, that's the hope, we can get a couple of classes in before December. It makes it a little easier because then we don't push into March. Our last class, I believe, was around the thirteenth of March, so it was starting to push into their next season. Right now, we have eleven people that have stated they will take the class. That, of course, will change, but I need at least eight, so that gives us a pretty good buffer when people, when it comes time to actually show up. And a couple of people don't show up, we can still hold the class.
So can you do that with the Zoom thing too? At the same time, just to maybe pick up a few more people?
They prefer it in person if they can. With that said, I know a couple of people that were, that took a paramedic class after we finished our EMT class. One individual from a COVID fire went on to the paramedic class. And when COVID hit, they had to go to online classes. So they don't like to, but depending on how the United States looks come November or December, that may be an option.
Everybody's getting more familiar with the technologies, so. Yeah. Well, with, with all that being said, we certainly appreciate you and the, and the local meetings and the LAPC meetings that we have weekly or not weekly now anymore, but bi-weekly. And you have been working with the Department of Public Health and Emergency Management and the care facilities and such, so we appreciate that. That what you've been keeping up with in this trying time, so we just wanted to brief report. I think we got that, any questions for Ryan? I guess what I had a question about, I know a year or so ago, what was our present, what was the by-county meeting on RPA? Was it our, what was our meeting up at?
It was at Dubu.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what the title of it was.
Actually, the one you give the presentation to.
District Six.
District Six meeting, yeah. So that drew a little interest from our neighboring county. So in this process, we were talking, going to the engineer steps in term, they have inquired to us, you know, that maybe if there was some timeframe, if you could allocate some time, maybe we could actually work out agreement with them that you could allocate some time for them and get them in compliance in some of their smaller departments. So I don't know how you feel about that. I know, I don't know what your timeframe is, like this time of year or anything like that, but if you're willing to do that first, and if we're willing to do that, so I don't know what my.
Well, part of that could work out with the classes that you're planning on giving. You could open it up with all their departments too, so instead of eight people, you might have twenty.
And that's actually what brought me to the CAPCE. Being able to provide the educations, we can easily do the Zoom. They just have to, you have to have someone there like the service director that can state, yes, these individuals were there from start to finish. Typically, they provide like a little ten-question test afterwards that just shows, you know, what they, they were there and they were paying attention to the class. The other thing is they're on a different schedule. Clinton County is on a different inspection schedule.
Oh, well, does that, yeah, that probably works out for the better. I mean, that's like the same thing we're talking about our bridge inspections with our neighboring counties here is that there's on a different timescale, so it works out good for us. So, yeah, I know, they were inquiring, actually a couple of supervisors had talked to us about it, and it was my inquiry, if you do have the time and have the time to do that, you could get them in compliance, maybe things running a little smoother for some of them too, so.
I, I think that, I mean, if we can save money, absolutely.
Well, that's where we want to be, and we want to be good neighbors also, so if we can do that and help for the betterment of both counties, that's what we're looking for.
There, there's always a solution.
Yeah, I appreciate your, I appreciate your willingness to do that and.
I would say, I would say talk to Dan in there and see if you can set up a time when Ryan could go and, and discuss it with them. And if he wants one of us to be there or whatever.
What I, where I tend to proceed with it is to talk to Dan and take it to their board, see what they'd like to do.
Sure.
See if they're interested. Still, I know they were interested at that given time, and when we talked, talked.
And they really, they really have been from the beginning. I mean, literally right from the beginning, they were extremely interested, but then, you know, budgets and all that.
Well, and other things fell into place, yeah, that's, yeah. So we appreciate that if you, if you are willing to accommodate maybe in some of their needs and.
We can absolutely.
So who would, who would be their contact person?
I'm going to call the chairboard, Dan.
Okay.
And I see, and just have him take it to their board and see if they're interested first yet, and if they'd like to how to proceed. If we want to have a meeting together, we can surely talk back and forth and, again, work out the parameters, so that's what we're all about here.
We can, we can absolutely make stuff work.
Yeah, appreciate that, and we appreciate what you're doing and keep everybody healthy.
Absolutely, we're trying. As long as I can remind everybody they still need to wear their mask.
You know, I guess, and that's the other thing we like to repeat every time, we're all responsible for our personal health and safety, so think about it, give a little thought and do what, do what's required of us, and not required, but asked of us anyway, so.
So an ambulance calls are going up now, they were, hospital visits and ambulance calls were down during this because nobody wanted to go to the hospital or call an ambulance, and now that's picking up and people are, you walk through Walmart and babies are chewing on the car handle and what.
We'll still need to be aware, certainly need to stay aware here. Appreciate it, Ryan. All right, thanks. Luanne?
Good morning. All right, calendar for the week. This afternoon at one PM, is it Eastern Iowa Children's Advisory Committee meeting by Zoom for Jack? And that's a new committee.
Yeah, this will be the first time they've met.
Oh.
For the new children's advisory committee.
Has that committee been formed correctly already? Yeah, yeah, my thought was.
I represent, I represent the governing board on that advisor committee, basically. I don't have a vote, I'm supposed to be there to hear what's going on and so I can report it.
You're the referee, is that what you're trying to say?
But it'll be interesting to see what all their responsibilities are going to be.
Yeah, well, you know, when you read the legislative reports, I mean, now we're talking, and I sent email. Settle down, settle down.
Did you see, was it, was it in the Telegraph Herald or the Quad City Times? Where they had the, the whole page, what did pass and what didn't?
I didn't see it in the page, but maybe I missed that day.
Anyway, it was a full page and they had columns like this. There must have been six columns across. The first column that went from the top to about a three-fourths of the way down was what passed. The rest of the paper was what didn't.
Well, well, they certainly, their time constraints were certainly limited, and I felt maybe that they could have extended some of their sessions, but.
They could have worked into June.
And.
Yeah, I'll tell you, what they didn't pass, when you read through that, it's just.
Well, and some of the things.
Really, really important things.
You know, as far as the mental health side of it, and you've seen the, the letters and such from our ISAC Commission where they stand on this, and I tell you what, I made a couple of emails myself to legislators saying, hey, you know, where do you, you're going to mandate something extra again and you're not going to fund it again? And you're going to put somebody else in charge of our region?
And they're not funding it and we are?
Well, DHS is going to be in charge of it, they better know what's going on in that region. I mean, it's, it's worthwhile to maybe make some contact with your legislators and say, hey, your ISAC team is working pretty hard on it, the way it looks to me.
Yes, they are.
When they put it in red letters and you have a tendency to read it.
So we have a meeting Friday?
Your meeting is tomorrow.
I'm sorry to interrupt you on that.
No, I was, I was saying, if you have any more information you want me to take to that meeting. Or actually, is it open for them too?
I assume so, it's a Zoom meeting. It's tomorrow at one o'clock. It's an ISAC supervisor's affiliate executive board meeting. And that's, that's on HF twenty-six forty-three, and it's a Zoom meeting. And generally Larry is the one that sits on that.
I'd like to invite more of these guys to come on.
Is that something, information that you could send out that we could jump in on that meeting?
I can see what I can do.
Yeah, see what you can do, we can jump in. I had sat in on a couple of mental health meetings just to listen, you know, get familiar with it. It's interesting, you know, so if you can get the whole state's perspective and anybody else's perspective, so you can send out information on that, that would be. And what time of the day was it?
One o'clock.
One o'clock.
Yeah, okay, that way.
At nine o'clock tomorrow, is an IRS conference call for Larry. And also at nine o'clock, Jack will be on KVC's Just Talk. On Thursday, June twenty-fifth, at nine AM, is a RPA meeting by Zoom for Jack and Larry. And from ten AM to three PM that day is the local floodway management webinar that, this is the same one that was canceled in March when the COVID kind of shut everything down. At four o'clock on Thursday is a local emergency planning committee meeting, a conference. At four o'clock on Thursday is a local emergency planning committee meeting, a conference call. That's the regular biweekly meeting that we've been having lately. Friday, June 26th, at 7:00 AM is the COVID and Leadership Team by Zoom for Larry. And at noon that day is an Iowa Workforce Office Hours Conference Call for Jack. Our next regular meeting is Tuesday, June 30th at 9:00 AM. I have more business than usual this week. Fireworks permits have been flying off the wall. Oh, yes. I have four of them.
Great stream of revenue.
Four, three of them have been on Friday, four of them have been on Friday. So I have four fireworks permit that I'm looking for approval. One is for Betty and Miller on the fourth, one is for Vanessa Cahill on June 27th. One is for Matthew Franz and on July 4th, and one for Lynn Morehead on July 4th. So I'm looking for approval of those permits.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the fireworks permit as presented. Any further discussion? I would hope that everybody had a chance to look at the maps and the permits. We all got them in our packet, so.
I figured out my route to drive.
We want to know where to watch them, yeah. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried.
These will hopefully be posted on the county's website as well, if somebody needs more information. My next order of business is action on Together We Build Building Midwest Construction Consultants. Send a packet of invoices, their expenses to date. We're asking for Chairman to sign these. They do not come out of the county's budget, they come out of Together We Build's budget.
But since we are going to own the building, I guess we have to sign off.
I seen Dean on here a little while ago, he must have had another commitment, but I don't know if he, why he was just. And Together We Build Committee have looked them over also.
Yes.
They're all, they're all.
Last week, and that's, this is what John explained to us.
Right.
At the end of our meeting last week.
Yeah.
So.
Good outline in here. Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve Together We Build MCC expenses to date with Mr. John Hanson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried.
The other thing we need to discuss this morning is extending the operation of U Head Start lease. Briefly touched on that last week.
Yeah, I talked with Kathy, is that her name? Jane, Jane from HACAP and said, and I talked to Sarah. So that we're going to extend the lease from June 30th to September 30th. And that way it'll fall in line with when HACAP takes over or when we're, our merger is completed. And that way, because when, when we allowed New View to sublease the Head Start, the C D I, they, they, they extended it till October 1st. And so this will be, make it consistent with both. And so Jane said that there wasn't a problem with that. I think Sarah talked to her, anyway, it's, it's, it's done so that we can take action to approve extending the lease to September 30th. And I would so.
A motion and a second to extend the New View Head Start Lease Extension as presented till September 30th. Is that what I'm remembering?
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye. Till October, extended to, actually, I'm going to resend that. A motion and a second to extend it to October 1st. That's what, that's what's on our lease extension. As presented in our extension, although I have a, do I have a second, did I have a second?
Second, yeah, yeah. With the approved changes.
Let, let Jack read that and make sure that all the parameters in there that they talked about with HACAP.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so I do have a motion and a second yet, where all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
That's it, that's it for me.
That's it for you?
Yeah.
That one's so bad. All right, do we have any other business before the board, any reports or? I talked to Ed, that's who I wanted to talk to.
Well, I think we need to talk to Heather and I think we also need to talk to the Sheriff's Department about using their personal credit card instead of. Because I know they have a county credit card.
Actually, yeah, that, that probably has really nothing to do with our claims that are presented in front of us. But if we're going to set a policy to use a county credit card, we need to adopt a policy before we can pursue implementing.
If you don't have a county credit card, get a county credit card.
Absolutely.
Use the county credit card, not your personal card. That's going to be moving forward, my recommendation.
And I think like we've talked about, you know, it's an audit issue for you. You know, I mean, everyone, everyone knows that these credit cards offer incentives for using them. So if it's, if someone's getting a perk out of it, then we certainly don't want that in the question, so.
No, it's, it's a huge, it's a huge question for me and I am concerned about getting flagged on the audit, so.
No, certainly, we're gonna, we will address that, yeah.
So do you want Luann to call Heather down?
Well, I just think we need to know why she purchased this other computer. Did anybody authorize that she do it?
I asked her like at the project, and she said.
Yeah, I don't think she should come down.
Dean, are you available or do you want to have some input?
All right, thanks.
You're muted yet, Dean? Who's that? That's better.
All right. Yeah, sorry, I got disconnected here and.
Oh, that's fine. Are you stopping in, any, any information or input for us?
So basically, what John Hanson has prepared there for signature is an itemization, breaking down the building, specking it out for us. Looking at the different entities or, you know, part of the cost and construction and all of that, which we asked him to do, which is going to be very helpful because he's already started tracking and helping us with some cost savings in different areas. So that's to get us 2.5 million and making sure that, you know, we don't run into some, you know, surprises along the way then too. So he's been reviewing all the bills as they come in and making sure things are there. So basically, three copies that are there in front of you. The yellow copy is what I need to return to John Hanson. He's just asking for a signature on behalf of the county here, acknowledging that he's provided this report to us and itemized it to us. So are there any questions or anything I didn't go over?
No, I don't, I don't have any questions personally. I mean, I didn't really have a chance to look it over all the, I'm sure they're on the up and up and you're keeping pretty close tallies on everything there. And your committee. Committee is well aware of what's going on, so.
Yeah, no. Watch them.
Actually, when you got disconnected, we approved it already, so.
May rescind that yet, but you know, I mean, that's, you know, I guess we, we trust you, you and your committee for overseeing the whole project. And we appreciate that too. It's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of work and there's a lot of time involved and again, it pays well, so, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we appreciate the support of the county, obviously, but we want to keep you on the loop and making sure that you know where we're at and what's happening. So, yep, thank you for all.
Lisa had a question.
When were you here on the CAT grant?
Well, we actually have been in contact with the CAT grant people. They've been having some questions. Our understanding is, is that the funding for the CAT grant has been approved. It was going through the normal budget according to Andy McKean, so that would be good news. We are definitely in the hot because we know they got their application and they're back at us with some clarifications and some questions. So Lisa, unfortunately, I don't have an answer when we'll definitely hear back. The next step would be obviously scheduling a presentation before the committee, so that'll be our next step, so.
That could be good news to me.
Well, they're talking about it, so they got it.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah, and so we're definitely on their radar, so we're glad to hear that, so.
Cool.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry about getting disconnected and everything, I mean.
Have a good day.
Take care, bye.
All right, we're still back into, maybe we're going to have some more discussion on our claims. And we have a couple of questions for you, Heather.
Okay.
So Jack's looking at the claims.
I guess, you know, we know that we, you just purchased a new computer. But now we're talking about plotter ink and laptop plotter ink. At $1,698.22. The total for all of that and apparently that wasn't budgeted, but it's within the, I'm still within the bottom line of my budget unless, because I had a significant amount in travel funds, none of which I've used. So I double checked that before purchasing anything. And yeah, now ink for the plotter, that's the large scale printer in my office as well as ink for my regular printer. I did get a laptop, I brought it in if you guys wanted to see it to work. He's in the field, particularly for our intern. And it works as a tablet or as a laptop. It's got processing capability, storage capability to operate G I S as well as tie into Orgizmo. It's got a stylus pen, so everything can be done on the fly in the field as well as work well within the office with a big enough screen, et cetera. Bluetooth enabled, has all the features that a regular tiny laptop doesn't have. So it's my understanding that as long as I was within the parameters of the bottom line on my budget, that, that would not be problematic.
Is like when you say, well, you're going to use it in the field, so are, do we have a hotspot or something we're using also or what do we use?
That's our Gizmo.
Oh, that's good.
Our Gizmo is basically amplifies a cellular signal and transmits it via Bluetooth to a phone, a tablet, a laptop, any mobile device. So you can utilize maps, you can utilize access internet. When you're out in places like leisure lake, for example, that's for Thomas used initially to map the sewer systems out there. So areas that you wouldn't have a signal otherwise, or you'd have too weak of a signal for it to be functional in a mapping environment. The Gizmo, as we conveniently call it, amplifies that signal significantly and makes it more effective.
Okay, well, we certainly want to be efficient, that's for sure. If you think this is in the parameters and, and, and this is something that we needed and to update our system and to use it, that's.
Yeah, I absolutely do. You know, I spent a lot of time looking into something that would be compatible in the field as well as in the office. And you have another, you expect internship project like we did with Thomas. It needs to be compatible in both environments, not just one or the other.
I can see the need for, if you're intern again, yeah, to have, have something that they can access and tie into the system, I suppose. Otherwise, they'd have their personal equipment. We budgeted for it. We budgeted for it, yes.
For next summer.
So not for this summer?
Correct, not within this fiscal, well, this is just.
So that's what I'm saying, so effective July 1st, which is our next fiscal year. Are you going to have someone on July of 20 or May of 21?
It would be May of 21. It's too late in the season and everything else going on.
Do you know what the project's going to be?
At this point, no, we're looking at something similar as what we did last year, kind of trying to build on, build on what we already have versus. And yeah, last year, Thomas used his phone, his personal cell phone, which is not good practice in the long run, but based on circumstances, it was sufficient.
So another project, we did a river float for Father's Day. Great until you dumped the canoe, but. Anyway, I was noticing the cornrows are falling into the river once again. And I know a lot of riverbank areas have been, what, using the word for this.
Like ripraps and stuff.
And some have been in, put in, set aside buffer field strips.
Buffers along there, yeah.
And I know there's a record of those buffer strips. I know there's one on the other side of Shoreline Beltman over there that they're paid so much not to farm and to plant grass. Can you overlay those contracts on to what's actually going on?
I would think theoretically, yes, I'd have to see how it's, I'd have to see the documents that whether it's maps or descriptions or what, to determine how much time and effort it would take. And there would then definitely need to be some aspect of ground trooping. Some of it, I guess, within a reasonable margin of error could be done from aerial imagery. But if there's question down to, I don't know, five to 10 feet, that would have to be done.
Of last year was extremely rough on the shorelines. I mean, all through, even through Prairie Creek, there's huge trees that have been there for probably 100 years that went down because of the change in the channel.
Yeah.
Well, again, we talked about this earlier in the year, the subsoil moisture is so high that anything that was down that far and holding, not holding when they're that close to the shoreline again, that's, you see more of that, yeah.
Right.
I mean, you see, actually.
I mean, there's, they're higher than the ceiling, the banks and they're just, they're.
They're actually breaking off with the root system and falling straight down, basically.
And I've seen it. I mean, I. Part of the Watershed Authority thing is to try to clean up this river and make it more, you know.
There certainly was a lot of erosion last year, yes.
I was just wondering if there's some way to, because I know they're paying money to riprap or just to keep it in grass or whatever. And then every now and then you see the corn falling in the, in the river. And I'm just like trying to figure out why is that happening? It's, so.
And, and, yeah, I mean, we, we might even want to have a conversation with F S A or something too. What kind of programs that are available for buffer strips or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to see, like I said, I'd have to see the data, how it's explained. But I think another beneficial piece of information is we can look at the historical aerial images over just the past few years. You know, try and discern where, say it's the, the crop ground owner's choice to plant up to the edge versus the edge completely eroded after they planted. You know, that would help filter out some of those scenarios. Because I mean, the end result is the same, but the intention would be very different. So I would expect those to be handled differently.
And with all the imagery and stuff we have, that it's a lot more accessible to find out that information and see, I mean, just overall, look at it to see what can be done.
Yeah, at least you didn't get a generalized overall perspective on what it looks like. Yeah, that would definitely be something.
One other one I looked at, I talked to Kevin Pullman yesterday, Sunday after we got out of the canoes at Bridgeport. With the rocks down there. It is disaster, I mean, it's dangerous. I mean, they threw a rope out to us to drag us in. Then you have to climb up over these slippery rocks to get back out of there and back to the canoes out.
That's out here north on 62?
Yeah, yeah, it's time to take a look at it.
Yeah, I noticed that driving by.
And Kevin thought, and as we talked about it, it looked like, I mean, there's a whole big pile of rocks from the abutment or the pier from the bridge. Nice big square stone ones. There's a section out there, if we could get somebody in there with an excavator and just move some of those around. So there's a quiet area where you can. So there's a quiet area where you can.
So is that like a conservation project too, that they need to submit something? There's there's funds available for grant money.
It's a river, river trail is what it is. So last weekend, four hundred people were there. And this following this, the weekend that we, yeah, four hundred people for each weekend made that route. And one of the other things comes is, you know, these people are asking me places to stay cabins or rentals and stuff like that. And I said, there's a real need for that too. So. So he's bringing in a tremendous amount of, uh, uh, which we call tourism to the county. I mean, it's well known. It's a nice.
Well, yeah, and it was, it was, again, we got sat back in March pretty heavily. So hopefully we don't get too fast with that and and.
I know Salsabiel Lake's been maxed out completely since it opened, those spots.
Along with that goes the calls down there.
Yeah.
Talk to Nathan a little bit about that. So we appreciated Heather. I guess we just had a few questions. So any other questions for Heather? I guess I'm just, so you're aware of the flood planning management, uh, webinar that's coming up on Thursday?
Yes.
Perfect. And and Ben is certainly aware of that too, correct?
Yes.
Okay, is the deadline to sign up? And I think you were going to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, I signed up right away.
Perfect. Thank you. Have a good day.
If you could give me a few pictures of that boat area out there for there.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead and run that. I'll take it out to Nathan in a little.
Thanks, Heather.
Find somebody's got a big excavator that could just go.
Yeah.
Donate some time or whatever to, because the stuff is there. It just needs to be moved out around and flattened out. And maybe some concrete put in or something, but just anything that's maybe being improved.
Okay, anything before the board this morning? Any reports from any other?
Well, work force has really been working.
I see that.
Trying to get some finalized things and we, um, I think we should probably have some information on the, um, fiscal agent. You've had a couple of meetings. We have another one tomorrow morning at ten o'clock after, after KMAQ. And I think hopefully we'll get it done soon. It's been a long, it's been a lot of work.
Yeah, it really has. Yeah. And if everybody cooperates, it makes it a lot easier, but.
Well, yesterday, we, yesterday we had a meeting and and last week when they scheduled the meeting, everything was fine, apparently, for the people that were supposed to participate. We got on the meeting and Miranda says, well, I just got emails from three of the people that were supposed to be on that they forgot they have their supervisors meeting on Monday, so they wouldn't be able to be there.
I see you didn't have a quorum. I had to do business. You didn't have a quorum.
We didn't do business. We canceled it. Fiscal agent.
It was a short menace.
Was on, and so we asked him if if he could do it later with. He said that, um, actually, he says, you know, he says, I can't tomorrow. But he says, I could do it Wednesday, and that would even be better if we got till Wednesday to get some of our questions answered from the Department of Human Services. So we're meeting tomorrow morning at ten o'clock.
So before, do you have any other questions as far as claims?
Oh, yeah, we gotta, we gotta go back up there yet.
Because otherwise I'm going to ask for a motion to approve. So I, if you have, I mean, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve and authorize the orders office.
A motion and a second to authorize the orders office to issue the claim warrants and publication of the claims and a listed amount of, and I didn't change my amount, I'm sorry.
One hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars, twenty-seven cents.
Okay, I thought there was a change after that. No?
There was a four hundred, we started off with four hundred and forty.
Okay. So in the amount of four hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-seven cents, as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, nay? Motion carried. Sorry about that, Lisa. Well, you know, we have been making changes progressively all along.
I wanted to say, but I didn't say it. We've tried to instill in the past that it's okay to have money carryover. You know, it's okay to have that go back into the general fund because we always need that while we're waiting for the tax dollars to get here. And just to go ahead and spend it because it's there is not a good practice. And I mean, it wasn't just her. There was a lot of those.
Yes.
That kind of irritated me, yes, that they do that.
In the fiscal year.
Whether they need it or not.
Any other input for, that you've heard from the public for our bond issue?
Oh, oh. I talked with, um, ECIA. Luanne sent them a copy of our previous brochure. They are going to, I thought maybe we'd get, I thought kind of after we talked last week that John was supposed to be getting us some stuff for the flyer. They're ready to design it and lay it out and at no cost. And then she did ask, I talked to Lisa about mailing and how many we would need. And so she said fourteen thousand, seven hundred.
And if we do just have a household, we could do less than that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So anyway, I told them, I told them probably we would want fifteen thousand in case we have meetings whenever we decide we're going to have this bond issue and they won't print them. They're going to just design it. And I think you said somewhere.
And we had to order envelopes and we had those penny printing.
And Marla called, Marla called me at home the other day and she says, I started working on this. I don't know what. Am I supposed to use this material that's here? That was, no, I said, I told Kelly I would send you a copy of the last one because I said the the footprint is smaller because it's not seventy-two beds. It's thirty with expansion to forty-two. And I said, the cost is different. And so I said, there's a lot that we have to get from John Hanson before she can put it together. But she says, as soon as we get the information, um, they've already started the design so that it's, um.
Well, I think it's certainly a good asset to us and for us to use. Um, we questioned or somebody questioned at one time, was that included in John's contract that he supplied them brochures or do them brochures?
He didn't the last time. He provided the information.
Okay. So I guess with that being said, we still have, we still haven't not agreed or decided on a footprint, basically, have we?
No.
Or when?
Or when the bond issue will be.
Or when the bond issue will be. Any input from the public that you received?
I've had a couple of people say, why wait? And I tried to, and I talked to ECIA about that too. He says, we're kind of in a quandary. We would, I mean, I would like to have it in September just because maybe the bond rates would not change and maybe we could get something going before there's a huge increase in materials costs and. But yet, then I think of the coronavirus and how would, how was that going to affect the, uh, taxpayers?
But we had a good turnout for the vote for the primary, even with the virus thing going on.
Keep in mind, you already had twenty-five percent of the vote was cast by absentee. So we, that was a huge number. I mean, we we counted over thirty-eight hundred absentee ballots. I don't know what your anticipation is as far as the overall turnout of the of the vote. But how do you get the bulk of those people to vote absentee?
Yeah.
I'll be honest with you, we're at, uh, we're almost July first here already. I don't know that there's enough time to prepare for that and and be ready for it.
Well, and if you, I mean, then we need to get a hold of bond counsel. We need to get a hold of bond counsel and talk to them. I mean, we have two things that need to be done.
We certainly also have to decide on our footprint and what we're voting on.
Yes.
So the latest plans. I mean, basically what I've heard is that it's going to be a tough time. I I don't, I don't want to discourage. Yeah, you're right. I get it. I I get, I will, I will back whatever we decide, but, um, I just don't think it's going to be a good time.
I just feel we need to move forward. So.
If you think we've got enough time to promote it.
I mean, yeah, it's going to cost a little bit of money, but if we don't go for it, it's going to cost us more, I feel.
The whole thing is if we even decided and 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 set the date for September, we wouldn't have been able to go out to communities and.
We can't.
Greet and meet and greet and talk about that.
But the nice brochure, I think, is the way, is the only way, really. Just ads in the paper too, but that, I think that's a good way to go after it. At this time, it's the way the situation in the world is. When our situation hasn't changed, we're, we've got people in there and, I mean, we're still at that point where something could happen in there and then we're looking at a lawsuit or something going wrong there too. And that could be devastating. It's, I mean, it's just not a safe place.
Certainly want to keep you forward and we certainly want the input from our Sheriff's Department at some point. That's yet to be decided also.
Okay, we. Could we put them on the agenda for next week?
Put who? Sheriff's Department?
Is there another time this week that we could meet and go over the the footprint?
Before that.
With the Sheriff's Department, John could be on, on the phone. So it's see if we can narrow it down.
Yeah, let's do that.
Because I think that regardless of of when we have it.
We still need to get.
We have to finalize that before John can give us the final figures.
Without the final figures, we can't do that for sure. So, yeah, we'll definitely need to do that.
What do we got, Luanne? Well, you have this, your schedule in front of you here.
Well, it looks like it's either got to be tomorrow or Friday afternoon.
Thursday's full. And Wednesday, we got the one o'clock thing, right? Tomorrow.
There is a leadership meeting. Uh, I didn't know, I didn't get enough information on that, Luanne, on Friday. I don't have a time. No, that's at seven, but, uh, I didn't know if there was another one I had. Maybe not.
Well, one of the things we can talk about is the operation of your partners, maybe twenty-eighteen partners, we should look into that on the twenty ninth to thirty. That's not this week.
Well, if we could nail it for Friday morning, it would probably be the best. Friday afternoon, everybody wants to go. Yeah, that'll be over by eight thirty. Maybe nine o'clock.
Okay, so we'll have to make contact with John and see if he can be available.
Do you want to just, do you want to call him now?
Yeah.
And see if he would be able to meet with us over the Zoom on Friday morning. So if he can't, then it's no sense in having it.
Um, is that something we need to wait to do or can we just, uh, have that meeting and publish it then? If we get it put together?
Unless we adjourn.
I would suffer that.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. We thank everyone for attending and have a great day.